Good morning. Today is March 11th, time is nine o'clock. The Board of Commissioners is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Commissioner Daley and myself are present. Currently Commissioner Dorison is absent. Can we get, identify yourself for the record, Ron.
I'm Watson, Assessor's Office.
Rob Brown, Treasurer's Office.
I'm here, Signaler, Treasurer's Office.
Tim Klein, Treasurer's Office.
Alex Murray, Operations.
Ryan Boyne, Procurement.
I'm Inhabited, Procurement.
Alyssa Ellington, Procurement.
Robin Stangney, Procurement.
Kathy Corlos, Procurement.
Robert Gray, Prosecutor's Office.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
A.T. guy.
Heath, report you with the Clerk's Office.
Bob Perkins, Ada County, Procurement.
All right, good enough. Ma'am Clerk, I'll let me change this to the agenda.
There you go.
No changes to the agenda. Okay, the first, we have to remove some unfinished business from the agenda. I'll accept the motion to remove some unfinished business from the agenda.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Okay, now, second motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay, first item, final ranking and award recommendation. Good morning, Mr. Steel Barn.
Before you this morning under unfinished business is the final ranking and award recommendation of RFP 25021, the design build for Expo Idaho's Steel Barn. And the evaluation team has completed the evaluation of proposals for this project and would like to submit this recommendation for award letter for your consideration.
Okay, could you read the letter on behalf of you?
It's a letter dated March 11th, 2025, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFP 25021. Dear members of the Board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the responses for RFP 25021. A final ranking that called by candidates was determined by evaluation score. The final rankings in order of evaluation score are as follows. Number one, Brycon Incorporated with a score of 88.79. Number two, Doll Rempel Construction Services LLC with a score of 78.0. Number three, McElbane, the score of 69.22. Number four, Jordan Wilcom Construction with a score of 68.90. Number five, CM Company Incorporated with a score of 66.97. And number six is Triple G Construction with a score of 60.45. And it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for RFP 25021 to Brycon Incorporated as the number one ranked proposer.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to award, based on the recommendations of the evaluation group, award, excuse me, RFP 25021 to Brycon Incorporated.
Yes. Okay, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Okay, next up on the unfinished business is amended resolution for Ada County Free Library District. We've had that under consideration. It was the pleasure of the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I, we've had more than one meeting on this and more than one presentation from the library board and the way I view it is we have, there are still some outstanding issues that need to be addressed. Our staff is willing to work with, county staff is willing to work with the library board to try to come up with ways to address those issues and so I, if you're ready for a motion, I'll.
Yeah, I'll accept the motion.
So I move that we deny the application of the Ada County Free Library District as presented to the Board.
Okay, do we have a second motion?
I'll circulate it.
Okay, do we have, are we going to send them a letter?
Yes.
Yeah, they're ready to go.
I'll get that to you this morning.
All right, good enough. Okay, hopefully they can come up with an acceptable plan. All right, you've heard the motion, is there any further discussion? Again, this is the second time it's been before us and each time it still didn't meet with what we think is the requirements that would follow the law, so, okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Now getting into new business, we have a proclamation declaring the month of March a procurement month. Commissioner Davidson, would you like to read that proclamation?
All right, the Board of County Commissioners, Ada County, State of Idaho proclamation to designate the month of March 2025 as procurement month. Whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business and whereas procurement professionals through their combined procurement power spend billions of dollars every year and have a significant influence upon the economic conditions throughout the world and whereas governmental procurement professionals contribute positively to the public agencies and services by improving procurement methods and practices and by utilizing new technologies to increase efficiency and improve processes and whereas Ada County Procurement, the Idaho Public Purchasing Association and other public professional procurement associations throughout the world engage in special efforts during the month of March to inform the public about the importance of the role played by procurement professionals in business, industry, and government and whereas the staff of Ada County Procurement do an exemplary job of evaluating the process under which fair and competitive bidding occurs and whereas training, networking, certification, and continuing education of the procurement staff ensure that the public is well served with the process of fairness in all aspects. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Ada County Commissioners, Boise, Idaho, do hereby recognize public procurement for its impact on governmental purchasing in Idaho and proclaim March 2025 in Ada County as procurement month. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion? Did you make the motion?
All move to declare March 2025 as procurement month in Ada County.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, let's give you the proclamation. Proclamation, resolution, if you can. I'll open the public hearing on resolution number 3078, a resolution for destruction of documents, the Assessor's Office. Any questions on this resolution? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to reapprove.
Let me close the public hearing on resolution 3078, sorry.
That's a good idea. I move to reapprove resolution 3078 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Now we have, I'll open the public hearing on the fire protection annexation in the Star Fire Protection District. Any questions on the annexation process? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and call for a motion.
I'll move to approve, let's see, approve the order of annexation of 20 below LLC property into the Star Fire Protection District.
I second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right, now we have a bid opening.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Under our new business this morning, we have the opening of bid 25032, the Ada County Labville 3/4 inch road mix project, and we received four responses for this bid. Evan has our Bonfire eProcurement system all queued up if you're ready for us to open. So as Evan's getting this opened up, today we'll be looking for the name of the bidder and the total amount will be the cost per ton that the contractors will be charged. Let's press, should be opening up here in just a second. Nope, data slots. Okay, so our first bidder is Compliance Solutions and Contracting, and they have a cost per ton amount at $17.10 per ton. Green Dream International has a cost of $26.39 per ton. Knife River Corporation Mountain West has a cost of $37.75 per ton. And Premier Aggregates has a cost of $19.40 per ton. So those are our four bidders up there and we will need a little time to review these bids and we would request that this be table for award to the March 18th, 2025 Open Business Meeting.
Okay, any questions? I'll accept the motion.
I move to table bid number 25032 to the March 18th Open Business Meeting.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Okay, now we have alcohol licenses, one new license, two Chinese beers, and 44 renewals. Any question on the alcohol licenses? I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the candidate permits and licenses as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Clerk's Office, fantastic report for us.
Chairman Beck, I will do my best. Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
Unfortunately, XXX, AKA Clerk of the Court, is out under the weather, went home yesterday and he didn't fail, so hoping to get him back soon, but on a more positive note, I haven't talked to you guys about the recording software system upgrade in a while and we had Tyler Technology onsite this week training our staff, so Monday through Friday, very extensive training. You might notice the recorder's counter is a little lean because we're funneling people through with the trainers as best we can, but still serving the citizens and the needs of the front counter. Training will continue the following week and then even the third week, but those will be remote and will include other departments that you see in this room and throughout the county. And needing to give a big shout out to our Director Heather Luther, she's done a phenomenal job managing this project to ensure that our timeline is not in jeopardy of changing and we're still slated to go live on the original date, which is April 7th, so we're excited for the return of investment still, not only for our staff, but also for the citizens, how they interact with the recording software. And still a big lift for the team, but pretty positive, we're reinforcing them with lunch throughout the week and that should get us over the hump for a successful week one, so I'll pause for any questions.
Any questions?
So this, as you all know, one of the things we're trying to do is, caveat wide, is efficiency, increase efficiency, so how this will help us do that, if this section, correct, for this section, this new technology will help us increase efficiency.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley, great question, and it impacts efficiency in so many different ways. Some of the tangled on other systems that have to go along with the Helionon system that we have to operate in can all be eliminated, so we're operating out of this one powerful system. We've got a network of support that we've never had with our current provider, so when we are dead in the water, we're truly dead in the water and that will be the case moving forward. There are certain functions that the team members will not have to do from a redundancy standpoint, so that'll free up man and woman power behind the front counter so that we can better serve the citizens. Where I really think some of the benefit of the buck comes though is with the citizens' engagement with the tool. Currently, they are coming into the courthouse to do the recording needs and this allows them to do a lot of those things from a tablet, from a device, in the comfort of their own living room, so I think the engagement with the public will just be a phenomenal hit. We're really excited about some of the reporting gains that we will have and we can get a better pulse on some of the workflows and queues working through it, so, great question, it'd be a long list to kind of walk through, but it's worth its weight in gold compared to the Helionon system.
Thank you. All right, thank you for identifying and presenting of the adopted system.
All right, anything else for us?
No, thank you.
How's the election remodel coming?
Chairman Beck, if you saw it, you wouldn't believe it.
I wouldn't.
We walked upstairs, the old drug facility, and there was a delay on getting the chute involved for the upstairs ramp for the garbage to go out, so when they started the demolition, there was about six foot high of debris throughout that entire 12,000 square feet, so you can only imagine the amount of debris. Since then, they've got the chutes in place, everything's gone up, they've got the walls and sheet rock starting this week, so now you can actually see the vision of the upstairs at least. And there's certain rooms that are missing in downstairs. Ally O'Brien, her supervisor's office, has completely been demolished, she's working behind a printer at this point. And the early voting room is a makeshift break room, front reception office, you name it, so it's in shambles, I will say, but I got to give a lot of credit to the team. Obviously, elections folks are very adaptable and they don't even complain about all this jack cameras and sauls and things that you could speak about, Alex, but they're doing it with a smile on their face, so it's, it looks a little rough right now, but there's only a few things on the timeline that are in jeopardy of pushing this back, but they think they can make up in other areas, so right now there's been no talk about pushing out that go-live dates, so all in all, keeping a really close eye on contingency, that's kind of the focal point, so I've been really glued to, but we've even included a really fun, a really fun project for the team. We put out a competition, as you know, they're competitive as well, and we've allowed our staff members to submit photos of the state of Idaho and we've done a voting process and the winners were actually going to blow up into giant murals and they will occupy the walls of the new facility, you know, have their name on it and the location they took it, so it's got some skin in the game and we're having a little fun with it as well, so all in all, we've got a lot of work to do, but I'm excited to say we're still on target for go-live and we're going to have a phenomenal facility that we can show off fair piers.
When is it go-live?
It's slated at the end of August at this point, that last week of August, 2025, so it's coming.
So you'll be able to hold the municipal elections just fine.
That's the plan, we were doing phasing, we'll accommodate what we need to do for the upcoming election, but it's, it's going to come with challenges, but it's the right team to get through it.
All right, any other questions from Clerk's Office? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the Claims Journal, I'll accept the motion on the Claims Journal.
I move to approve the Claims, I'll write, Chairman, based on the documents on behalf of the Board for the March 7th, 2025 Claims Journal.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have Personnel Actions. I'll accept the motion on Personnel Actions.
I'll move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we have, next up, we have the Assessor's Office. Anyone here from the Assessor's Office?
I am. No report.
Oh, we have some tax cancellations.
Yes, we do. Some tax cancellations, we have a BTA ruling in there, that's the big one. There's a BTA maybe on that one, came in halfway between where we wanted it and where they weren't, so.
Okay, so the, our expert witness got us halfway. All right, any other questions? All right, I'll accept a motion on the tax cancellations.
I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have Treasurer's Office.
Mr. Procurement, Commissioners. This morning I have the investment portfolio reviewed and worthed and reviewed, this is February. For the month of February, we really didn't have a very much activity other than our collection of our normal interest that we get in, bond coupon payments and so forth, there was no new purchases, so everything's pretty static there. If you look at our interest, cumulative interest on page six, you'll see that, and I took a calculation here, we're earning just a little over a million dollars a month on average for these five months of this fiscal year, 1,016,585, so we're on track to capture about 12 million total for this year, but we'll continue to monitor that. So there wasn't a lot of activity here in our portfolio for February, however, the equities and bond market, there's a lot of activity there. As you probably were, yesterday I think we were down as much as 1,000 points, I think it made on the Dow and it settled just a little bit above that in the 900 range if I recall. This morning I looked, equities are down again, bond yields are down, and so what that means is sort of a fleeing to safety, so the bond prices go up, yields go down. That doesn't really affect us too much, other than our market value, but since we don't trade and we just hold to maturity, so it also means that the interest, or the yields that we do get, we bought at a good time. The Fed is meeting next week. Tuesday and Wednesday, they'll make a decision on what they're going to do, if they're going to do anything. There have been no comment from them now because they're in the blackout period before the decision and normally you might get some sort of comment when you see the equities and bond market moving as much as it has. And as you're probably aware, I think they often say that the market doesn't like uncertainty and there's a lot of uncertainty right now. The tariff war going on, I think this morning I saw Trump had put 30% tariff on lumber and so a lot of lumber comes from Canada that would make house prices more expensive for builders, so there's just a lot of moving parts right now and a lot of back and forth. I, my personal opinion is I don't think we'll see the Fed make any changes next week, but we'll have to wait next week to see what happens there. And then, of course, there's talk about recession. Nobody really knows, I guess, if that'll happen, but the Doge, I don't know if you've been watching the Doge stuff, it's pretty interesting because there's a lot of government spending that now is getting cut back because they're canceling contracts and cutting a lot of that out and GDP, you often hear about 70% of GDP is made up of consumer spending and the consumer's pretty tapped out right now. And then about, little over 20%, I think last year was about 24%, is government spending. So with the cutting back on government spending and the consumers are cutting back because they're concerned about the economy going into recession, you can see where GDP could fall and then we get two quarters of that, then we're officially in a recession. So a lot of uncertainty, it's pretty fascinating to watch, so we just don't know what'll happen, but our portfolio is positioned properly, we follow a good strategy and so the county's in good shape.
All right, any questions about the portfolio? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a grant application. Idaho State Parks and Recs for the Recreation Boat Safety Grant. Any questions or issues with this grant? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve grant number 2507-A as identified on the agenda. Authorize the online completion and submission of the grant by Kevin Lowry of the Sheriff's Office and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have the approval of minutes, we have the approval of open business meeting and the tax exemption hearing. Any issues with that? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have three interim agreements at Expo Idaho. I'm particularly interested in this pygmy goat show that I'll be interested in, and gymnastic, anyway, any issues with any of the events? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Expo Idaho interim events as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have the, some agreements to approve, there's nine agreements. I reviewed the agreements, is there any issues or discussion on any of these agreements? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the agreements as identified on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, is there any issues or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have some indigent items, any question or issues with any of the indigent items? I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the recommendations of the Indigent Services Staff as listed on the summary of cases dated March 11th, 1980, 1980, March 11th, 2025, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, any questions or issues? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Any other business needs you brought for the Board? All right, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning. Today is March eleventh, the time is nine thirty. The Board of Commissioners is in session acting as the Board of County Emergency Medical Services District for its weekly open business meeting. All three Commissioners are present. We have some guy on the board on the deck, Sean Rain.
Good morning.
You're with us, Sean?
I am.
All right, we have...
I was with Duncan Communications.
Then we have regular IT guy. Okay, any changes to the agenda, ma'am clerk?
There are none.
No changes, all right. First item up is the claims journal. I'll accept the motion on the claims journal.
I move to approve the EMS claims as listed on March seventh, twenty twenty-five EMS claims.
Second.
All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say the five to say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have some personnel actions. Any questions or issues on the personnel actions? I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Next, we get to our favorite part of the meeting. Oh, we got a whole big screen up there.
Hovering in the clouds.
Yeah, hovering in the clouds. Go ahead, Sean, give us a, give us...
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
So a couple of updates. Yesterday, House Bill two oh six and two oh seven passed the Senate, so they're off to the governor's desk for his signature, so that's a good thing. There is a second trailer bill now, Senate Bill eleven fifty-nine, that there were a few of the smaller counties that wanted some adjustment and so they were doing a friendly amendment and so that, that on its second reading today and should be going over to the House side hopefully soon, but two oh six and two oh seven got passed, so that was a good thing. Been working on for about three years now, so the only other, other thing to mention is GMT. We had a conversation with our consultant group, or the consultant group who were working with Idaho Fire Chiefs and it sounds like there is some movement on finalizing that cost reporting template, so hopefully we'll, we'll see the results of that here soon. That's, that's all I had for today.
All right, any questions from the board? All right, well, thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Unless there's anything else that needs to be brought before the board, we'll be adjourned. We are adjourned.